Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, July 7th, 2022. Call the roll, please.
Counselor Kent?
Here.
Counselor Genatino?
Here.
Counselor Cuddy?
Here.
Counselor LaCastro?
Here.
Mayor Quill?
Here. Please join us in the place.
Ladies and gentlemen, the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you remain standing for a moment of silent prayer with function? Thank you, please be seated. Public announcements.
Yes, Mayor, I do have a couple of announcements. And for this, I'm gonna head to the other podium. Good evening, everybody. Just have a very brief public announcements presentation prepared this evening because there's a lot gonna happen over the next couple of months. And there's been a lot of planning from our Department of Public Works and Parks and Recreation, as well as the Historic and Cultural Sites Commission, and the Downtown Bid, and the Equal Rights Heritage Center, with lots of free, family-friendly programming happening all summer long. So by now, city residents should have received in the mail a summer newsletter we did with programming for our parks, thanks to the support of members of council through the city budget, and then just a couple of weeks ago through an agreement that the council entered into with the CNY Sports. There's gonna be lots going on, so I'm just gonna quickly run us through some of the things. And I'm gonna start out with the Harriet Tubman Bicentennial. This is a lot of activity gonna be happening over the next couple of months. In particular, a program that's been funded through the council by the American Rescue Plan, funding for tourism, as well as we received a grant from the Quga Community Foundation for the traveling statue that arrived in Auburn last week on Friday, July 1st. The statue will be at the Harriet Tubman Home on South Street for all of July and August. And it's a named "The Journey to Freedom." The sculptor's name is Wesley Wolford. He will be in town, actually, the weekend of July 22nd, 23rd. And there'll be some events planned with the sculptor when he's in town. But in the newsletter, and what we wanna do is point out to everybody there's some great free public programming being presented this summer in partnership with the National Park Service on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays this summer. At 10:00 AM, the Park Service will be offering a free walking tour each one of those days. That starts at 10:00 AM at the Equal Rights Heritage Center downtown. They will lead, the park ranger will lead you on a tour of Harriet Tubman stuff through the downtown area. Each day, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, at 2:00 PM, out of Tubman Home, the Park Service Rangers will be leading a guided tour on-site, which will include the traveling statue, "The Journey to Freedom." And then at 4:00 PM each day, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday this summer, they will be hosting a gallery talk at the Equal Rights Heritage Center, specific to the Tubman Bicentennial, and many of the people that were involved with not only abolition, but women's suffrage that are featured in the Equal Rights Heritage Center. So the complete listing of Tubman Bicentennial events is at harrietubman200.com. And we encourage, it's not only for tourists, but it's for locals alike. And we encourage people to try to get out this summer and take advantage of some of that. Another announcement I have for you is this was the one event that was canceled back on June 10th. It's been rescheduled. There'll be a free showing of the Harriet Tubman movie, "Harriet." It's been rescheduled for July 14th, 2022, at 8:30 PM down at the Booker T. Washington Community Center, beginning at 8:30 PM or dark, whichever comes first, down at the Booker T. Washington Community Center. And that's a rescheduled June 10th event. And then, next week, on Friday, July 15th, another Harriet Tubman Bicentennial event is being held Friday night at the Carriage House Theater over at 203 Genesee Street. Kate Clifford Larson, who's well-known to us here in Auburn, who's written one of the more extensive Harriet Tubman biographies. And Janelle Hobson will be in town. And they'll be presenting that night on Ms. Magazine. Did a Harriet Tubman Bicentennial program earlier this year, which was an online event, which featured over 60 different publications that were put into that program. And they're going to be doing like a virtual presentation, live presentation of all of that programming and documentation for the Tubman 200. That'll be Friday night, July 15th, over at the Carriage House Theater. And that's a free event, free and open to the public, thanks to the funding that the council's provided for some of these events. So it'll be exciting to have these folks in Auburn. So on to some of our Parks and Recreation activity. Casey Park Pool opened this week on Tuesday. Despite the rain, they were able to get opened and had a full day. So the park is open from now until August 28th. It's free for city residents and for YMCA members. It'll be open noon through 6:00 PM daily. So the partnership that we have with YMCA, we thank everybody at the Y for getting the pool open again for us, for the enjoyment of our youth in particular. Our summer concerts kinda get started tonight. Our first one, unfortunately, earlier this week was rained out at Hoops Park with the Joe Whiting Band. However, that Joe Whiting Band concert's been rescheduled for Wednesday, July 20th, up at Hoops Park at 6:00 PM. But tonight, jam factors over at the Marcus Street Park. And the complete listing of summer concerts for the city can be found on the city website. And the quickest way to get there is auburnny.gov/summerconcerts. So lots going on. She's got about 30 free concerts booked for the summer. That's Kim Balsow from our Recreation Department. And then Monday, movie series starts next week, Monday night, July 11th. That'll be every Monday from July 11th through August 29th at a different playground. Next week, it starts with the Rabbit movie. I can't remember the official name of it. Is it Peter Rabbit 2 or something? Peter Rabbit 2, over at the Clifford Park, 8:30 PM or dark, whichever comes first. And there's been a lot of excitement for this on social media, so hopefully Mother Nature will cooperate and people will come out. And I'd like to thank our Assistant Corporation Council for being one of the models in the photo that we have here. Yeah, I don't know if he notices that, but he did make it to the photo. But this is a great, free, family-friendly programming. People are encouraged to bring their own chairs, bring their own popcorn. However, Poppy's Treats will be on-site at each one of these, selling ice cream as well. So our Saturday market this year has moved over to the Exchange Street Plaza and Genesee Street. The next one of those is this Saturday, July 9th, Exchange Street Plaza. And there'll be music by Luke Mock over there. And vendors will be out from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM. That's across the street in downtown Auburn. That's also in conjunction with the Downtown Bid. And then here's the complete schedule for the summer rec program. It's a little hard to read on the screen, but starting next week, the new program that the council authorized a couple of weeks ago with CNY Sports begins. On Tuesday, July 12th, from 1 till 4, they will be at the Lincoln Playground over on Fulton Street. On Wednesday, July 13th, from 1 till 4 in the afternoon, they'll be at Clifford Playground on Mary Street. And then on Thursday, July 14th, 1 till 4:00 PM, they'll be down at Casey Park. Now, what's gonna happen is each week, at the very, very beginning of the week, by Monday morning, we will post some of the specifics of what's going on at each one of those playgrounds for the week to our city's social media pages, as well as to the city website. So the public can tune into either one of those things to see specifically what is going on that week. But we're looking forward to getting that program started this coming week with CNY Sports. So, and that's, I believe, is the last slide on my presentation. But lots going on this summer, and there's been a lot of hard work by our city staff and people at the bid and people at the Equal Rights Heritage Center to pull some of this stuff off. So we encourage the public to come on out and take advantage of this free, mostly free, summer programming. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point in time, we will open the "Public to Be Heard" portion of the council meeting. Residents are asked to state their name and address for the record. Please keep remarks to three minutes or less. And please observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decorum.
If there's times where anyone desires to be heard. Please, one second, ma'am, please. If you give your name and address for our record, please.
My name is Andrea Berbillaus. I live at 6976 Owasko Road. Forty-eight years ago this August, an historic event occurred in Auburn. Auburn's Drum and Buhel Corps, the Purple Lancers, was the first, and to date, the only drum and buel corps to make world championship finals. And it was a big event, I know, because I was there. Unfortunately, we've missed the Purple Lancers and parades and other events around town in the last 40-some years. But the organization's been doing stuff. This year, we decided that we would make a gift to the citizens of Auburn. We invested a couple thousand dollars in private music lessons for students in grades 4 through 12. We sent out letters to all the schools in the area. I figured we'd only get 35 or 40 kids to do it. We got 72. We do lessons Mondays through Thursdays at Hoops Park at the clubhouse. We scare the ducks. And we also do them at Owasko at the Pavilion. The children have an opportunity to have a half-an-hour private lesson with a teacher that plays their specific instrument. And we're hoping that we can undo some of the damage that COVID proved to give to some of the school music programs, because they're all hurting, and we're trying to do our best to fix that. For many kids, music becomes an alternate universe. The shy become confident, the agitated become calm, and the lonely become included. Music reveals the inner child. Participation in the arts teaches self-worth, resilience, a good work ethic, leadership skills, self-expression, and most importantly, compassion. The Purple Lancers are gonna try to get started again this fall. We've got a couple of different programs that we're gonna offer for the young people in our community, and our goal is to keep the music playing. This is such an important thing for the young people in our community and surrounding communities, especially in the times that we're living in right now, with problems with gun violence, and kids and gangs, and drugs, and everything else. Music really does give the kids something that they can start as a youth and carry on through adulthood. So I'm hoping that as we progress, that you'll support our efforts. When our program is done, the first Friday in August, we're planning to put on a little performance of what we've learned. I haven't figured out where we're gonna do this yet, or how many kids will be able to participate. But they are learning, they're having a good time. Our teachers are doing a magnificent job. And I just wanna let you know that no matter what happens, there will be a group of young marchers and players in the Christmas parade. That's our first goal. And then we hope, within the next few years, to see the Purple Lancers back on the streets, bringing honor to Auburn. I still participate in drum corps activities on the national level. And when you say Purple Lancers, people know where Auburn, New York is, even after that period of time. So I'm very proud of this program. As program director, I've had a good time organizing it. I'm having a good time meeting the students and the teachers. And I think you'll be pleased with the results of this program when we're finished. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Christine Decheck, and I live...
Thank you, Counselor. There you go, thank you.
Yes, my name is Christine Decheck, and I live at 9 Penn Avenue, Auburn. The reason why I'm here is I stopped earlier this afternoon to speak with Mayor, but he wasn't available. So I spoke with his secretary and she basically let you all know what's going on. But this problem that we're having at my home is we have a neighbor right next door to me. And it's not just my neighbor right next door, it's the street. There's a couple of houses on the street that are getting to be really disrepair. And I work really hard to take care of my property. And I'd like to be able to go and sit on my porch. Can't do that anymore for the garbage that's on the side of my driveway. It smells horrible, it's like living at the dump. And I just went in to speak with them about that this afternoon, to try to get someone to please help. I've talked to the mayor previously, and he said that the code said you couldn't do anything about garbage containment. You know, my personal opinion is it's time to change the rules on garbage, because it's really quite offensive when you sit on your porch and that's all you smell is garbage. I've lived in my house for 40 years. And the city where I live has been a nice section of the city, but it's going downhill really fast. The property owner took off two of the, they had a double porch, and I have pictures, I'll pass them around to you all. They had a double porch there. And last year, the double porch disappeared. Two porches disappeared. It was an up-and-down porch. And I said, geez, you know, I'm not a nosy-nosy person type situation. I don't care what other people do, it's their business. But I didn't see any permits to tear porches off, so I just happened to ask codes one day when I was there about something. And they said that, you know, that apparently he tore down the porches, but didn't have permits or something, he had to get them afterwards. Whatever the case, I don't care. The only thing I care about is when I spoke with Brian Hicks, he said that they were supposed to replace one of those porches back. Right now, there's only a three-step process going on, just three steps coming out their door. And they put it in a nice little cement walk to go to the road. But there's no sign of a porch at all coming back. And it's been since like October, November of last year that this all occurred, that they took it down. So I'm asking if someone could please look into that. I mean, it makes the house look terrible, you see the pictures, Jimmy? It's terrible to have to live next to this. It's, I just, I'm a poor, I really am. And it's like, there's house, like two horses down, house is down from me. That property's getting to be really bad. And I saw in the paper that he's back on his taxes, but no one seemed to be doing anything about, you know, what are we gonna do with this property? Just going down. He's got like several people living there, and I don't, no one does anything. And it's just getting to be terrible. He's got a car back there at that property. It's been sitting there for I don't know how long. Same thing over on Sheridan Street. I don't know if you know where my house is, Jimmy, you know. My house, last house, and I see the properties are, you know, on the right side of me on Sheridan Street. And there's a guy over there that's had a car that's no plates on it. It's been out there for weeks, months, probably, actually. So, you know, the area is getting really bad. And it used to be such a nice area. And I can't talk, I've already tried talking with the owner that owns the property right next to me. I tried talking to him last year about the garbage situation, and he's just deaf ears. So I ended up having to put fencing up, you see the fence, it's brand new fence.
Mr. Decheck, we have to cut you off now with our time, but thank you. And the city manager has possession of your photos. Are, can we keep that for...
Yeah.
All right, thank you. We'll have somebody get those back to you.
That's okay.
I received your email earlier today, and we're already working on it.
All right, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And all of you have a good night.
Is there anyone else that's wanting to be heard this evening? Very well, we will have a second "Public to Be Heard." But if you had spoken the original one, you're not allowed to come back up. But thank you for being with us this evening. Counsel, I can't believe Mr. Mason told me that all the minutes are available this evening. So I think he got tired of keying in all the ones that weren't here. So approve of the meeting minutes from June 16th of this year. We have a sponsor, Counsel Cuddy, second by Counselor Genatino. Discussion, correction, deletions. Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Here.
Minutes of June 23rd of this year. Sponsor, Counselor Genatino, second by Counselor LaCastro. Discussion, correction, deletions. Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Here.
Now, we're up to date, I misspoke, I said there were three. Very good, thank you. Mr. Diger, city managers report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, the city is accepting bids for the Spall CDBG tree planting program. Bids on that are due back August 2nd. We're also accepting applications from nonprofit agencies for funding through the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Program of the American Rescue Plan Act. Applications are due back July 29th. More details on both of those topics is available on the city webpage under the tab "Bids and RFPs," related to the grant funding. Interested agencies can also contact our Planning Department for more information there. We've got several city projects that are actually winding down at this point in time. The parking garage project, most of the heavy construction and reconstruction work there is wrapping up. Some of the parking is now available again in the lower section. As they're wrapping things up, they're also sealing the concrete in various sections of the parking garage, so there is more parking availability. There will be a short period of time where the parking garage will be closed towards the end of July, early August, to finish the sealing of that concrete in some critical areas that will effectively shut the parking garage down for a couple of days. We're working with Downtown Bid, and local merchants, and some of our partners around downtown to try to accommodate parking for a few days. The annual road program, we should start seeing some milling and things like that firing up next week as that moves ahead. One of the things that will, excuse me, start up that project is the State Street area where the plaza is. The north end of that, there's a section that still needs to be paved. That will, I believe that's starting up on Tuesday with our road program. Patrick will be starting there to wrap that up. Several of us from city staff went down to the State Street Plaza area today to look at a few things and check out progress. The contractors right now are the landscape contractors that are in there. They expect over the next two weeks to wrap that aspect of the project up. There's still fencing that will go up, decorative, like wrought iron fencing that'll go along the State Street area. But one of the reasons for our field trip down there today was to actually just take a look at things so that we can get a better idea and start developing plans for programming events and things like that in that space. And we've been discussing what some of the rules and regulations will be for use of the space and all of those associated things that we are already having some interest in. We're already receiving requests for different businesses that want to program that space at different times. So we're working through that. And also discuss, there's gonna be some outdoor furniture that will be in that space, trash receptacles, benches, things like that. So there's a few final installations that are gonna take place over the next couple of weeks. We should be good to go. As we were down there, excuse me, discussing things, and thinking back of how long there was a wooden, blue plywood wall there that then turned green for several years. And you can finally kinda see the way things are gonna clean up down there, so that's nice. Unfortunately, our city clerk mentioned to me on our stroll back that we now have another issue downtown, and that's the old Schumung Canal Trust Building on Genesee Street. So you have seen some activity there over the last month or two with parking restrictions and some safeties put in place to keep pedestrians out of the area where debris was falling from the sixth-floor facade of that building. We have been in communication with the building owner and the building management company. And this week, there is scaffolding being placed there that will allow us to reopen the parking spots, reopen the sidewalk, and pedestrians will be able to pass underneath that scaffolding and kind of resume some normal flow of pedestrian traffic and parking in that area. We do not have a definite timeframe on when the appropriate repairs will be made to the building so that we can eliminate all of those functions there. But we are making some progress. One of the other things that happened this week is we started our security here at City Hall. And just for all of your information, counselors, so that is during normal operating business hours here at City Hall. The person assigned to that is a special patrol officer. And that is, in most cases, a retired police officer. There'll be someone specifically assigned here to City Hall. They will also provide service to the Equal Rights Heritage Center, as well as a parking garage. So one of the intents is to have actually a police presence in the parking garage during some of the busier times, to maybe make that a little more appealing to folks. Alongside that, as school has come to a close and the SROs are no longer in the schools, we typically put those SROs back out onto a patrol assignment. And Chief Slaton has reassigned one of those SROs to actually do a walking beat in downtown. And that has already started. So there'll be a patrol officer actually walking downtown, visiting businesses, updating information on businesses, contact information, things like that, and interacting with businesses downtown on a regular basis. And the last thing I have on my list is quite a while ago now, council approved a land lease agreement for a solar company at the City Landfill. That project is still moving forward, but similar to a lot of things that we've dealt with over the last couple of years, there's some delays in them getting work completed due to their ability to procure some of the equipment they've got. But you may also recall, we went out, or the company went out, and they did a public campaign to get people signed up for the program. It was very successful with over 1,000 people signing up for that discounted electric rate, so on and so forth. And I believe they had around 700 slots available. So there's, they actually overperformed in that area. We have been receiving phone calls recently, because one of the one of the advertised perks of this was that when you signed up, you'd get a $50 gift card. So we've been receiving phone calls because people have not been receiving those. And I will tell you that over the last week or so, information has gone out of them. I've been in communication with the solar company, because there's a little bit of confusion when those cards are not mailed to people. They're actually, there's a link that's emailed to people. And it comes under a name that's different than the solar company we're working with or the program. We're Auburn Community Solar. So people in the community, if they're looking for it, if they look at their emails, they'll have an email from Solomon Community Solar. I'm just kinda throwing this out there for the public's information, your information, if you happen to hear anything. And then it turns over into a company called Blackhawk. And so that is legitimate. I went through the process, and I communicated with the solar company to make sure that things were legitimate. They're going to try to improve the communication on that. They understand what some of that confusion is. But I just wanted to mention that to you all, that they are following through on that. But folks that may not be checking their email or see something from an email address that doesn't sound the same as what they signed up for, that's what it is. Okay? That's all I got.
That's all?
That's it.
Questions for Mr. Counsel, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Diger actually had three questions. In regards to the bank building, I know you said that there really isn't a definitive timeframe. But is there, do we have an ability, if this goes on for several months, to push them along so that it doesn't turn into, you know, this perpetual scaffolding just sitting in front of this building?
That is definitely our desire. And that gets into certainly more of a deep dive into the legal consequences of that, our ability. But so far, we've had a decent line of communicate, I think the communications has been good. I won't say I'm overly enthusiastic about the actual physical response to everything we've asked, but it is coming along. This process that they're going through right now is a relatively expensive process just to put this scaffolding up. So we'll keep pr... to put this scaffolding up, so we'll keep pressing.
I mean, maybe one thing that staff can share with them and maybe they already have is, you know, there's a new round of Restore New York money that would probably be a good fit for a project like that. Second question I have is with the Events Plaza, the adjacent properties that we sold, as the work is being wrapped up in the park itself, what is the plan of the new property owners to, and then we talked about this when we transferred the property, that, you know, there's got to be something there that is conducive to what we've done. Are there big ones?
So, we had that conversation today amongst staff and some of our staff members have been in contact with those adjacent property owners. It's my understanding that those property owners are moving ahead with trying to get their areas finished up along the same timeline as us. I don't think their finishes probably won't be as extensive or expensive or complicated to install as ours, but they'll complement what's there, is my understanding.
And the last question I have, in terms of security at City Hall and Equal Rights Heritage Center and parking garage, are these officers uniformed or?
Yes.
They are uniformed.
They are uniformed.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just a quick question about the solar situation. So, the folks that signed up for this should have received an email from Solomon Community Solar?
Yes.
And so, they should look for that because a few people have asked me, I know when they gave their presentation and when you signed up, you were told it would be several months, several months before you would see a savings and so forth, but I had forgotten about the card and so it would be good to just, if anybody knows people who they know signed up, to let them know to look it up.
Yeah, so the Auburn Community Solar, the company we've been working with on this, they're preparing, when they've sent me a draft notification, that they were actually going to follow up with everybody that signed up to try to spread the word.
Thank you.
Counsel.
Has anybody received a certificate, card, or anything yet off the solar?
Well, I'm working through that process myself. I'm, I guess, the test case for that and that's why I'm able to keep communicating with the company. So, I am not sure, my answer to that, I'm not sure I'm working through it, trying to see how it works and that's what really got me concerned and I reached out prior to it. It just happened that the very next day after I tried working through it, we started getting phone calls from other people. So, we'll work through it.
Thank you.
Also, Counsel.
Mr. DeGard, I took a walk out on our front porch here today in the columns and I noticed a couple of them are, they're in need of some repair. I just, I know staff is on top of it, but they don't want to get so far on the hand and we had larger, major problems, so if we could look into that or whatever. They're very, it's been an ongoing issue, I'm sure, since they were installed, but they do need some work. They certainly don't want to come to work one day and our porch is not a porch anymore, so.
All set?
Thank you. Resolutions. Financial Resolution Number 75 of 2022 authorizing various operating budget transfers. We have a sponsor. Counselor Genatino, second advise. Counselor Cuddy.
Financial Resolution 75 of 2022, whereas the City of Auburn staff is requesting various operating and non-operating budget transfers for the fiscal year 2021-22 as outlined in attachment A, and whereas there is no fund balance being requested for the transfers, now therefore be resolved by the council that one, the Auburn Council does hereby authorize the transfers in attachment A for the 2021-22 fiscal year and two, the resolution shall take effect immediately.
Discussion. Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Award Resolution Number 76 of 2022, awarding a bid for the East Genesee Street John Street paving project. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Kent, second by Counselor Genatino.
Award Resolution 76 of 2022, whereas on June 17th, 2021, the Auburn City Council passed Grant Acceptance Resolution 74 of 2021, authorizing the acceptance of a New York State Transportation Touring Route Fund Grant, which included funding for East Genesee Street and the John Street paving project, whereas the East Genesee Street John Street paving project involves the million in paving of East Genesee Street between the Genesee Street Bridge and Fulton Street and also the million in paving of John Street between East Genesee Street and Arterial East. And this project also includes the installation of storm sewer laterals, improvements to corner sidewalk ramps, repairs and improvements to utility road patches, and adjustments and repairs of manholes and catch bases. Whereas on June 28th, 2022, bids were open for the East Genesee Street John Street paving project and the following bids were received. One was Paul F. Vitale of Auburn, New York, $850,200. Two was Barrett Paving Materials of Liverpool, New York, $878,412. Three was Seeland Contractors of Rush, New York, $1,270,000. And four was Seneca Stone Corporation of Seneca Falls, New York, $1,300,000. Whereas it is necessary at the Auburn City Council award the East Genesee Street John Street paving project to the lowest responsible bidder, namely Paul F. Vitale Incorporated, which has submitted a low bid of $850,200. Now therefore be resolved, the Auburn City Council thus hereby award the contract to Paul F. Vitale Incorporated, the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $850,200. Be resolved, the resolution in the amount of $850,200 is to be charged to the 2021-22 touring route count number HA 5110440KP. Be it further resolved, the mayor is authorized to sign any and all documents necessary in reference to the award of the bid.
Thank you. Discussion, Counsel. Counselor, please.
Does this include the sidewalks for John Street?
Sidewalks for John Street will be, they're not part of this bid necessarily. They are part of this?
Because they're not listed as part of being the scope of work. Bill will be in matting, he's had the, they're part of the project.
That's correct.
They're part of the project, but not part of this bid, correct?
No, they're part of this bid.
Okay. Because it's not included in the scope of work as well. We had also talked about possibly using touring route money this year to finish up the Genesee Street.
Yes, and we're working on that. Staff's met on several occasions. Engineering department's working on some options, different options that would have different cost factors based on the design and the plan is to actually have a meeting with some of the property owners and business owners in that area to get their improvement on that.
I see the trees are marked out on the Genesee Street. Are those going to be part of this year's project or are we going to wait to do that as we do the streetscape?
That I can't tell you for sure.
It's both.
It's both?
Yes, we, I have.
Billy, come on up, yeah.
We included a certain number of trees in this original bid. It is a unit item, so we could do them all, but we did not have them staked out when this was, went out to bid. Since that time, we found out there was more trees up and down the street that should be replaced, so we were thinking when, if we do the second phase, depending on, we didn't know how the prices were going to be, if we couldn't afford to do it there, we'd put the remainder of the trees in the second portion if we do improvements on the, more of the sidewalk.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lupin, before you get away, Counselor, go ahead, please.
Go ahead.
Now, go ahead.
What is corrected amount?
There was a mathematical error. He did, they extended the figure wrong. We have a unit price, we have an estimated quantity. They multiply it, sometimes the extension is different than what it should be, so that's an corrected amount. So, there was one, one error on one item. When he extended it, he extended it wrong. I think it was one of the storm sewer items, 10-inch storm sewer. There was, 50 was the estimated quantity, his unit price was 50. The extension should have been 2,500. He had something different. We corrected it because the unit, in our contract, unit prices prevail, so whatever they write for the unit price, we extend it and then we, and if there's an error, we just correct it.
Can the second bidder contest that?
No. It's clearly stated in the bid that the unit prices, and it's only, I think it was a couple hundred bucks, so I mean, the other guy is 28,000 higher, so it was a minor error. He just multiplied it wrong.
Thank you.
Mr. Lupin, before you get away, we had a discussion a few months back in regards to street lighting on Vitale Drive and your answer at the time was they were working on installing the lights?
I had spoken to the Ben Vitale who owns it. He said that he was trying to secure the lighting poles and fixtures to install, but he had not, what he called hadn't acquired them yet and that he was anticipating that they would be up sometime this year. I will check with him again to see what his latest status is, but street lighting poles are notorious for a slow, a long lead time, just like traffic signal equipment. I mean, it's usually several months, you know, to get it.
I believe it's been a couple of years, so I think that's, I understand.
The agreement before was when he first did the subdivision, we wouldn't require him to put the final course of blacktop, the rather, the remaining sidewalks where the street lighting in until it was partially developed, but that end is getting developed, so now I've informed him that he has to install the street lighting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All set, Counsel?
Thank you. Further discussion, if you call the roll, in regards to Resolution Number 76.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Thank you.
Award Resolution Number 77 of 2022, authorizing awards, awarding a bid for the Auburn Water Filtration Plant Improvements. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy, second by Counselor Kent.
Award Resolution 77 of 2022, whereas November 9th, 2021, the Auburn City Council passed bound Resolution 7 of 2021 to fund the cost of improvements to the city water system and whereas the Auburn Water Filtration Plant Improvements involves complete restoration of the 1914 slow sand filtration plant, including but not limited to bypassed finished water piping, clear well tank rehabilitation, HVAC upgrades, lighting upgrades, valve replacements, architectural building improvements, sand process cleaning improvements, and access upgrades within the facility. Whereas on June 21st, 2022, bids were open for the Auburn Water Filtration Plant Improvements and the following bids were received. Contract number one, the general contract, was MA Bon Giovanni Incorporated Syracuse, New York, $4,399,000. Two, Booley Associates of Auburn, New York, $6,947,000. Contract two for electrical, J&amp;E Electric Incorporated of Auburn, New York, $908,300. Contract three, mechanical, King &amp; King Mechanical of Auburn, New York, $120,483. AFT Mechanical LLC, Elmira, New York, $134,000. And Syracuse Mechanical Incorporated of Auburn, New York, $173,252. Whereas it is necessary at the Auburn City Council award the Auburn Filtration Plant Improvements to the lowest responsible bidders, namely contract number one, general contract to MA Bon Giovanni, which has submitted a low bid of $4,399,000. Contract two, electrical, to J&amp;E Electric, which has submitted a low bid of $908,300. And contract three, mechanical, to King &amp; King Mechanical Incorporated, which has submitted a low bid of $120,483. Now therefore be resolved, the Auburn City Council thus hereby award the contracts for the Auburn Water Filtration Plant Improvements to MA Bon Giovanni, the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $4,399,000 for contract number one. J&amp;E Electric, the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $908,300 for contract two. And King &amp; King Mechanical, the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $120,483 for contract three. Be it further resolved, the cost of the resolution in the aggregate amount of $5,427,783 is to be charged to the Water Filtration Plant Design Project Account HF 8330440JJ. Be it further resolved, the mayor is authorized to sign any and all documents necessary to reference the award of the bid.
Thank you. Discussion, Counsel. Questions? Counsel, please.
For Bill.
Mr. Lupin, please.
I understand that the general from Bon Giovanni, what was the second bid? Was there a big difference?
Yes, Booley Associates and that was $6,947,000 versus the $4,399,000, so he was probably 50% higher.
Or 2.?
Yeah, 2.5, 200, $2,550,000.
The only reason I'm asking is when the job's all done, I hope we're not paying Bon Giovanni $6 million in extras. I mean, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but are we good with that bid? Are we close? Have we got everything covered?
I mean, all jobs, you know, you don't know what's going to happen until you, especially on an existing facility. You do hit some unknowns. There is a little wiggle room in there. There is an item for, I think it was like an extra $50,000 that was included in the bid for change order items. You know, we're, GHD reviewed the bids, the total for all three contracts, I think it was like, what, 5-3? Our estimate was about $6 million, I think it was, 6-1 for the total of all the contracts, so we're very happy with the bids that came in and all three contractors. Bon Giovanni has done a lot of work down at Suits Treatment Plant and they have worked with the city for several years. I've worked on several projects with them. They're an excellent contractor. I can't say that we won't see some unforeseen and won't be back here for a small change order, but I think they did a pretty good job estimating what needs to be done. I think we're in the vicinity of what the total price will be for the three projects. I mean, there might be a 10% plus or minus contingency, but it's still, you know, well within what we thought the total project will cost. I'm very comfortable with this price.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, Counsel? Thank you, Mr. Lupin. No further discussion. Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Thank you.
Agreement Resolution Number 78 of 2022, authorizing change order number two to GHD for the Water Filtration Plant Improvement Project. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy, second by Counselor Kent.
Agreement Resolution 78 of 2022, whereas on April 22nd, 2021, Auburn City Council authorized award Resolution 51 of 2021, which awarded GHD, a professional services contract to complete design services related to the slow sand filtration plant and clear well upgrades for the Water Filtration Plant Improvement Project in the amount of $345,000. Whereas on November 4th, 2021, the Auburn Council approved change order number one to the agreement with GHD in the amount of $31,700 to cover additional professional services costs for design work and bidding services for the project. And whereas change order number two to the agreement with GHD in the amount of $241,000 is required to cover additional professional service costs associated with construction phase services such as specification and equipment approvals, construction meetings, periodic construction inspection, concrete inspection and testing, asbestos air monitoring, and integration of electrical, electronic control equipment for the project. Whereas the cost of the resolution is to be charged to the Water Filtration Plant Design Whereas the cost of the resolution is to be charged to the Water Filtration Plant Design Project Capital Account HF 8330440JJ in the amount of $241,000. Now therefore be a result, the Auburn City Council does hereby award change order number two in the amount of $241,000 to GHD for additional professional services related to the project. And be it further resolved, the cost of the resolution shall be charged to the Water Filtration Plant Design Project Capital Account HF 8330440JJ. Be it further resolved, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary and reimbursement requests on behalf of the city for the project.
Thank you. Discussion, counsel. Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy. Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Agreement Resolution Number 79 of 2022, authorizing a settlement of the real property tax assessment proceeding concerning a parcel of real property located at number 81 Genesee Street, known as Latimore Hall. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Genatino, second by Counselor LaCastro.
Agreement Resolution 79, 2022, whereas for the tax years of 2020 and 2021, Latimore Hall WCBB commenced proceedings challenging the property tax assessment of the real property it owns at 81 Genesee Street in the City of Auburn, Auburn City School District at Huguen County designated as the property. Whereas Assistant Corporation Counsel Nathan Garland appeared in the foregoing proceedings on behalf of the City of Auburn. Rebecca Spino appeared and intervened in these proceedings on behalf of Huguen County, and Catherine Gabbit appeared and intervened in these proceedings on behalf of the Auburn School District. Whereas after extensive settlement negotiations, the parties and their attorneys have agreed that a settlement as outlined in the attached proposed stipulation of settlement and judicial order would be in the best interest of all parties and would avoid further litigation expense. And whereas the Auburn City School District Board of Education and the Huguen County Legislature have already approved or will soon approve the proposed settlement as outlined is attached. Now therefore be a result, the Auburn City Council does hereby authorize Assistant Corporation Counsel Nathan Garland to execute the attached stipulation of settlement and judicial order, wherein the tax assessment of the property owned by the petitioner shall be adjusted as set forth therein, and two refunds shall issue in the amounts set forth therein.
Mr. DeGard, I see we have Mr. Garland with us here this evening, so I don't know if staff had planned on a small presentation or what your intent was.
We're available for questions. I'm not sure we really had a presentation coming.
I think that's a fair summation, Mr. Manager. And by way of a presentation, Mr. Mayor, this property was assessed at $3.8 million for a significant period of time, the last 10 years. It sold this year for $1.5 million, so that is the fair market value by what your property is most commonly assessed. For the two years that I think we're all kind of referring to as the pandemic years, '20 and '21, as you can imagine, the property's ability to produce income for its owner was basically zeroed out. It's a dormitory, and as we all know, kids weren't going to school during those years. So I think there is some, there's some true equity concerns that exist with the property. If you average the two years that are litigated out and relative to the proposed settlement, the assessed value for those two years would be $2.2 million, which is certainly in excess of what the actual fair market assessed value was right now. So I think even though refunds will have to issue for one of the years, the second year will be set at 3.8, and going forward, the value of the property is set at 1.5. So I think it's a, it's a fair resolution in all respects.
Counselor's question, Mr. Garland?
Mr. Garland, before you sit down, please, is the building occupied presently, or is it able to be occupied presently?
Mayor, I don't, I'm not entirely familiar with this current status. I know there has been a change in ownership, of course. I believe that owner intends to use, continue to use it as a dormitory, but I can't say what their, their current summer usage rate is. I know in the past, they've rented to the Merry Ground Theater players, but I don't, I don't know if that's happening right now.
Fair answer, but it's hopefully to be used for the same type of occupancy.
I believe that is the plan.
Question, counsel?
Thank you.
Thank you. No further discussion, counsel. Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
I do not believe we have any table item, staff under presentation, I believe we have anything.
Other business for the counsel, counselors? Everyone's happy. Second public to be heard? Is there anyone designed to be heard? Very well. Do we have a request for executive session?
Mayor, staff is requesting executive session to discuss one matter related to a collective bargaining agreement, one matter made confidential under Attorney Frank.
Very good. This time, entertain a motion for executive session, unless you have something to add, counselor? Very well. Anyone else?
I have the same thing, I don't know, it's for the same issue, though. Okay, all right.
Very well. So entertain a motion, Counselor Cuddy, second by Counselor Genatino.
Executive session for 5:59 PM. Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye. We'll be in recess for executive session.